Okay, all right, so I'm gonna call the Board of Selectmen meeting at seven o'clock on Tuesday, September 27th, 2016. And before we get going on our business, as usual, I'll ask everybody to please rise.
(inaudible)
(laughing) Leta leggins to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think he's asking that around. Okay, so first item on the agenda is the resident portion, and we have quite a few in the room. So just before we get started on that, I'm gonna ask those that would like to say anything, that I'll just remind you, the general policy is about five minutes per speaker. And please, if there's a number of you saying similar things, please try not to be repetitive. Selectmen will obviously listen to each of you as you go through, and then we'll comment as we, as we will at the end of that resident portion. So we will not get into any kind of debate, we'll discuss it after everybody has their say. So if anybody would like to say anything, just please come up to the front table, state your name for the record, and off we go.
(inaudible)
Sure. If you sit, if you sit there, the microphone will pick up your voice for all of the many fans at home.
The reasons that many of us oppose the article, that the Board of Selectmen and Town Manager put on the special town meeting warrant. One, there's been a charter and bylaw in place for about thirty years. The bylaw that was passed to have the Board of Selectmen appoint five members and the Council on Aging appoint six was done to allow the seniors in Tewksbury to have more weight on the board and to keep the COA non-political. In thirty-six years, this balance has never been an issue or concern until this year. The bylaw changed, the BOS wants us to appoint all of the eleven members. This would give the BOS total control and authority. We are unaware of any incident that has caused (inaudible). We aren't aware of any incident that has caused the Selectmen and Manager to revoke this change. Nobody has this bylaw in challenge until now, why? The only reason the Town Manager and Chairman of the BOS, Bruce Panalitis, have given to get, is to give, is to get the COA in line with the other boards in town, and they keep citing the Historical Commission. The Historical Commission deals with buildings, not people, the COA does. The other reason they give is that, as the bylaw is presently written, it gives the Chairman of the COA alone the authority to appoint the six members as they come up for reappointment. The Chairman and the Town Manager feel that, feels that gives the Chairman of the COA too much authority. Several times, I asked both of them, why not just change that part of the bylaw to state that the Chairman of the COA must discuss their appointment with the COA board and then have the majority rule? In my opinion, they will not even comment on this, or they haven't to me. This past Thursday, approximately forty seniors and other residents of Tewksbury met at the Senior Center with the BOS Chairman, Bruce Panalitis. He stated several times that we had to give a good reason to change his mind and with two, so he would withdraw this article. For about two hours, several people spoke in opposition. At the end, he said, "We had not convinced him." And you know what? He didn't convince the residents either, that there was a valid reason. There was a former Selectman present who asked why this was put on the special town warrant, which is typically for budget purposes and not on the May warrant. Again, no reason given. The special town meeting is very lightly attended, unlike the May meeting, which has many issues that bring in many voters. Also, the Selectmen and Town Manager would have been able, and should have been, to also been able to discuss this with the residents who, who actually they are supposed to be representing. A friend who follows the boards of the town found it online September 15th. Otherwise, we would never have known. The warrant is not mailed at this time, and as you are aware, most seniors do not use the internet. They would have read about this change in the last sun after the, after the town meeting, which would have been too late. It is a shame when we feel that we cannot trust the people who we have voted for to look out for the best interests of all the residents of this town. Flipping this article in without any discussion with the seniors and residents beforehand, at a special town meeting, just as wrong and feels very political and self-serving. The seniors are especially upset as they see, see this as an intrusion into something that means so much to them, by a group of five who do not have any contact with the center and now want to make the decision of who will be on the board. The big question is why? The excuse given just sounds like that, excuses. Other boards' issues are black and white. The Council on Aging is not. It carries responsibility to listen and care about the concerns of people. The issues are about more than a brick and mortar building, they're about helping the seniors who have helped to make this town what it is today. Many of our seniors, where they use the center on a regular basis, are helped through the center's outreach programs, need to know that they can have their voice heard. They do not feel where this slip-through article, that is happening. Okay?
Anybody else have any comments?
Ms. Pan, I didn't get the name of the speaker.
Joan Unger.
Hi, Linda Braden, for some of you who don't know me. Respectful, respectfully too, I, I'm requesting that the Board of Selectmen withdraw the article, Article 22, from the special town warrant, for many of the reasons that Joan just mentioned. However, there are several points that I'd like to, that I feel are important. The first being that the COA is an advisory and advocate board, that's what I look at them as being. They were different in the past. So a lot of the seniors are comfortable in going with their peers. There are, I think, out of the appointed ones by the chair, there are just two that are not seniors, and I think that would be Joel Debutant and Joanne Aldridge, and they're seeming to be seniors. But I think that it's important to have their peers there, because I think that there'd be, maybe, maybe some of them, some of them won't be intimidated to come and talk to you, but there are people that, in the town, seniors in the town, that might feel that way. And at one time, the board wasn't like that. At one time, the board had the authority, if you remember back, when they were hiring a director, there was an, there was turmoil over who was gonna hire that person, and it ended up being that the council did. However, when the town charter came into play, that changed. So any authority that the Chairman, or the Council, had, was gone. The powers-to-be, or the authority-to-be, are the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager. It was suggested, it makes suggestions as a board, and it does vote on action to be taken. However, that, that has to go through the Town Manager for approval, and ultimately through the Board of Selectmen, which I think you all know anyway. Therefore, the Council on Aging doesn't have any real authority to worry about. They might cause a little commotion, but I don't think they'd have anything to worry about, and I'm sure that Selectman Panalitis has got to make sure of that. The town charter changed it, as I just said, and, so, so to speak, the, any of, the authority that the COA had previously possessed, does not possess now. Due to the discontentment of the number of seniors, a number of seniors, when they found out about the, about Article 22, Chairman, the Chairman of the Board of Selectmen agreed to come and meet with some of the people, and Marie Stronik was invited to come, and we met last Thursday at the Senior Center. And my point is that I wanted to, in Selectmen, Stronik brought up an interesting concept that impressed me. And that was that every, that she had every confidence that the Board of Selectmen and the Town Manager had the utmost of integrity. And I feel that same way, too. However, in the future, which I think she mentioned, that may not be the case, as it has been in the past. And that's what this bylaw was for, was to protect the voice of the seniors. And the bylaw was put in before the charter, so it was meant for a little bit more than that, but now it, it's just meant to, to do that. It continues on. I agree with that, with her comment, and that was just, she was kinda like thinking through at the time, and had said that she had not thought of that before. I agree, I agree with, with their comment, and by no means has anyone's integrity been questioned. The other thing is, though, but, you know, the people are, that are opposing this also have great integrity, at least the people I know, and so that, you know, what they have to say or their feelings should be taken into consideration. What I was not happy about as a resident is that the decision wasn't brought before the court, you know, before the, the court. Before, you could call them a court. Before the Council on Aging to read-
As long as there's no hanging judges.
Yeah. Just to, to pass it by them, or see how they felt, it was, most everybody found out, because we don't all go to town to the Selectmen meetings, this way, you know, by a phone call or something. So it, it does make it seem a little bit questionable why it was done that way. It may have been an oversight, however, I feel as though it lacked some respect for the Council and the seniors. And again, that's all I have to say, and I would ask that you withdraw Article 22 from the town warrant.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? And please state your name for the record.
Hello, everybody. My name is Virginia Desmond. I have a letter here that Joanne Aldridge, Dr. Joanne Aldridge, has sent to me, in case she couldn't come this evening. So I'm just gonna pull pieces out of this, so if you'll be with me while I work through it. It says, "I do not understand why the Board of Selectmen's motivation to change this bylaw after all these years. The bylaw has been around for thirty-plus years, and we have had no issues. Wonder why now, all of a sudden, it is an issue, and that the Selectmen are taking interest in the COA. The reason this bylaw was put forth was to keep the senior citizens with a mechanism for input and to keep politics out of the Senior Center. The Senior Center should, the seniors, in general, should not have to worry about this. The center should be a second home, a haven to come to, and enjoy socialization, friends, activities, health fairs, et cetera. The original bylaw, passed by the votes of Tewksbury thirty-plus years ago, states that five appointees are done by the Selectmen, and six appointees are done by the chairperson. But this is not every year, which the Selectmen did not seem to grasp. The Selectmen and Chair of the Council of Aging have two appointments each year. In fact, in the past ten years, the chairperson of the Council of Aging has a board, has been a Board of Selectmen's appointee." So actually, the Board of Selectmen have had a seven-to-four majority on the Council of Aging, if you look at it accurately. The Chairman of the Board, Mr. Panalitis, stated that they are bringing the boards together, as Linda stated, to get the, to be in line with the town charter. But the concern is, is that this was done only in, over the internet, and a lot of seniors do not have the internet, or availability to computers. So they used to mail the warrant, and now it's no longer any mailed, it's left in the library, and it's left at the Senior Center, but they both were not in that visible area where somebody could pick them up. So this was a concern. Many of the seniors did not know about this warrant until it was brought to their attention. "The Board of Selectmen are fit to change the COA bylaws. Again, what is the hidden agenda, and what is the urgency of changing it now, especially with the Council on Aging input, or any other discussion?" And at that special town meeting that we had with Selectman Panalitis, the favorite saying from most of our seniors was, "If it ain't fixed, if it ain't broke, don't fix it." And that was the thing that kept coming up. The seniors feel a little concerned about the fact that this is not something they were aware of, this, to their, our knowledge, and when we asked Mr. Panalitis about what's going on, he told us that the main issue was, was to get in the bylaws in, aligned with the town, and that the chairperson had too much authority, and that that was the issue. I have been a past chairperson, and whenever we make decisions, we talk it over with the board people. And what the seniors would like is to have the Selectmen reconsider this, and withdraw the warrant, or move it to the May town meeting, the yearly, annual meeting. We're not wondering why it's put in at this time of the year, which is usually a fiscal situation, and not a, not to bring up warrants. So it's intended, from what we understand, for this to be voted on October 4th, but we'd like it to be moved to May, so that the Selectmen, whomever you desire, meet with the Council of Aging, discuss this, and see if we can come to some recognition that a warrant does not have to be drawn up for. That communication between both groups may be enough to separate any issues that you have and to resolve any issues that you may have. Thank you very much.
Anybody else?
Okay, good. Some of us don't feel to be brought to town meeting. It was, as Ginny said-
You have to come to the mic, just so that it's in the tape and it's interr-.
As Mrs. Desmond said, it's usually, an article like this does not come under the special town meeting, unless it's something urgent. I don't think this is urgent. But in the same breath, I really don't wanna go through this again. I, I don't think there's, not that I don't respect what you're all thinking, but I really think that this article doesn't need to be changed. It's unique, we're not, as Selectman Panalitis said, we're, we're not the only ones in the state that are unique and have an article like this. There are very few, but there are. So again, I would just ask you to withdraw the article altogether.
Anybody else?
I'm talking a little different than those people, because I have not been involved too much with the seniors the last couple of years for any reason. But I was involved when I was a young person, in my forties, when they were starting to build the Senior Center. And the idea was to have a place for all these people in the town, young and old. The young people still use the facility also, we have Girl Scouts and stuff using it also. But the people that are seniors that are there are ones that worked to build up this town. They built the police station, the fire station, the library. Anytime there's any fundraiser or anything like that, they're the ones to do it. A lot of them have worked in the town, a lot of them worked with the elections. And they are very, and a lot of them, the outside jobs are very smart people. They kinda feel that this is saying that they're not as smart as you think they are. They're very bright, and they don't like something being, taken away from them. This was being built was for the seniors. People say the seniors are a clique. People have come in that are new to the town and say that they're very good when they first come, they have their spouses, and all of a sudden, spouse passes. All of a sudden, you wanna, your friends also change. You go to the Senior Center, and when you first come, granted, it might look like this clique, you might be quiet, but most of the time, if you're there, someone will see that you're standing by yourself, and they'll say, "Oh, come over here," and they'll talk to you and find out what your personality is, what your jobs are, just what your life is. And they will find someone that has your similar interests. So it's not a clique, 'cause then you find that you've got that support. "Oh, when my husband was sick like this, this is what happened." My wife was sick. There's men that go there, that play pool and everything else, and they have exercise men and stuff there, too. So it's not just a women's old ladies' club, it's a men's club also. There's a lot of very active men. And I think that is part of the thing, that, that when the seniors made it, there was Tom Conlin and Mr. Howe, and a lot of people that now passed, and that was the idea of letting these people go and have their own home. And they still work, the elderly, work with the, have programs with the high school kids and stuff. So it's not like they're just little old people sitting around it, and they're the most active people. Peggy O'Keefe just passed away. I'm only in my seventies, and she used to say, "Oh, Angela, you can't do that, let me do it for you." And she's ninety-nine. So they're very active old people. And I'm, when I'm talking to old, I'm talking eighty and ninety now. But I was involved as a volunteer when I was in my forties down there. So they have support groups for Parkinson's, caregivers, they have so many things. And right now, they have, we call it pheas, the luncheon things, on Tuesdays and Thursdays, for the public to come in. Not just the old people, but anybody in the community to come in. So it's a community place, not just a senior place. And the seniors that are running it, let me tell you, if anyone made a personal, made a decision by themselves, like the Chairman and the Board, they would not get away with it. That word would be out so fast, they wouldn't know what hit them. And they would not get away with it at all. You don't do anything on the individual group there, you're not the boss, you're the community. So even though you're the chairperson, the chairperson has, gets opinions from everybody. And if you've been to any meetings with any seniors at anything, they make their opinions known. And if they feel they're getting screwed, they will let you know. So don't fool around with the old folks, 'cause they know their rights. And I'm not that old compared to a lot of the people down there. But no person has control over anything. Everybody has input into anything that goes on, no matter where you are. As we have input into here, we hope that you will listen to this, to our discussion and our fears. To be have, one of the biggest things when it was built and was involved, was, it was not to be a political place. It's supposed to be a community of outreach to the people in the community, not to have any politics. So, not that we don't trust our politicians, some of them, no matter where you go, but on the whole, we've been very fortunate, we've had very good Selectmen, I know a few of you from a long time. I knew all the old ones, but then, that's another story.
Sad to say, we're old now.
We're mature. We're not old, we're mature. And we see little things, hindsight is wonderful. You've gotta look and see what you have, and look to the future. One day, you will be the ones wanting to use that facility. So remember that also. So that's all I have to say. Remember, you're dealing with a community of people, and it's not just what the, what that general, our public for every place else. This is our community and our decisions, and we have to take care of our people. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else would like to speak?
Okay. Okay, so you know, I'm gonna just respond generally to some of what I've heard before I open it up to my colleagues. So I'll just reiterate what I did say on last Thursday, when I met with many of you, and many more of you that aren't here now. For me, and I, and I'll let my colleagues speak for themselves, but for me, this is an issue of good governance and how we should do our business. It is that simple. I understand it is a bit emotional, and that there's fear around what's gonna happen with this, should it pass. All I can tell you is that this is not about the programming at the Senior Center, this is not about the outreach to the seniors that don't get to the Senior Center, this is simply about the appointment to the Council. For the majority of our appointments, since I've been on the board, I would gather, and I haven't done the count, but I would say ninety to ninety-five percent of the folks that ask for reappointment get reappointed. It's not universal, but it, but for the most part, people get reappointed. So there's no anticipation by me, for sure, that there would be any significant change to the makeup of the Council with this change. But I wanna address a couple other issues that I heard there. First of all, there is no precedent that suggests that special town meeting is only for fiscal matters. We have addressed issues very similar to this at many special town meetings, whether they were in May, or whether they were in October. So I understand that there's that notion, but there certainly is no statute relative to that, and we have conducted this sort of business many times in October. There was a lot spoken about the programs and how involved the Council members are on those programs, and what they do in those programs. And all I will answer that is that the Board of Selectmen appointments that we have made, those members are good members, they are very well-qualified, and they are participating in those programs, and they are helping to lead those programs. So clearly, we have a track record of appointing people that have not only the skills and the interests, but the, the desire to help out and do good work down at the Senior Center, and for our seniors generally, even those that don't make it to the Senior Center. The current bylaw was in the eighties, the charter came in in the nineties, and they're out of sync. And as, as was referenced, I mentioned the Historic Commission, but we've done a number of these sorts of things, where we've looked at how we do our business, and we've found places where our bylaws and/or our charter were out of sync with either state law, or between the two, there were disagreements. This is the situation with that, with this. The charter says one thing, it says the Board of Selectmen appoint committees and boards. We appoint twenty-one or twenty-two boards and committees in this town. We do so in an open, transparent way. We put out applications, people, anybody can apply to those positions online. We look at all of those applications, we offer interviews to those people that are interested, we conduct those interviews in an open meeting, anybody can come to those meetings. Excuse me. We then come to this room, and we appoint those people in an open and transparent public meeting, where people can hear what we're debating about, who we're putting up, and why, if there is debate about it, often there isn't, because we're not always having a competition for some seats on some boards. And as far as the politics issue, actually, before I get to that, one more thing. The Town, I will, I will point out that the Town Manager did speak to the Council Chair and the Vice Chair prior to this coming to be published, as well as, we spoke about it twice publicly, and I understand that every other Tuesday night is not exactly, a Board of Selectmen meeting is not exactly a must-see TV, but we certainly have been out there in the public with this for over a month. And as I mentioned, the Town Manager did speak to both the Council Chair and Vice Chair, and whether that information was passed on, I can't, I can't say. And I, if it wasn't, that obviously was unfortunate. And lastly, on the politics aspect, this notion that while the five of us are just wonderful, and the Town Manager is just wonderful, but that three years from now, or six years from now, or whenever down the road, we've changed, and you guys have all gotten rid of me, and my colleagues, and you've got somebody else up here, that that group of people won't have the integrity to go through a process that is open and transparent. Number one, I will reject, because I, I trust the voters that voted for me and voted for my colleagues, that they would vote in people that have integrity. Second, if they don't, and they make a mistake, there is a remedy. I am up for reelection April. If you don't like the appointments I make, if you don't like the votes I take up here, you can get rid of me. You can vote for somebody else, you can run yourself. However, in the current structure, the Council Chair has the authority to appoint six members over the course of three years. There is no recourse. This is a appointed volunteer that is not subject to election, is not subject to any side of, or, sort of oversight. And the, and the reference to the Board of Selectmen having seven out of four control, that presumes that I am, as the Chair of the Board of Selectmen, calling up the Chair of the Council on Aging and saying, "I really think that Joe Smith should be a member of that Council, and I expect you to appoint them." I guarantee you, I have never made any such call, and I don't believe that my colleague, Mr. Johnson, the Chair prior to me, has made those calls either. We appoint people because we think they can do the job, because they have- We appoint people because we think they can do the job, because they have the appropriate experience, and then we ask them to go do the work. I don't have the time to chase down the chair of any committee to say that I really think you should get this person on, or you should really do this. I don't have the time for that. And again, I don't think my colleague did it prior to me. So I don't think there's any politics here, uh, this is a matter of how we do business. That, my opinion hasn't changed on that, but I will, uh, offer up to my colleagues any comments that they would like to add to that effect. Mr. Gay?
Yes, just a couple of comments, Mr. Panalitis. I, the, the couple of comments were made about the, this board having a hidden, hidden agenda, and I can at least say from my perspective, I don't think there was any intention of a slight from this board or there's any hidden agenda from my colleagues. Um, I've been on the board for a number of years like Mr. Johnson has, and I, there's never been any, any intent to slight the seniors. I think this board has utmost respect for the seniors and the council on aging. Um, I, I'm the Board of Selectmen representative on the Lowell Regional Transit Authority, and I've worked closely with them to get a van for the council on aging, which you just recently got, so to make a comment, there's a disconnect between this board and the seniors is just, it doesn't really make sense. The board is trying to work with, with the seniors to, to make the right decision, and I understand the comments and I certainly, um, hear what you're saying as far as you're upset about the potential that this could change. But I, I can assure you, at least from my perspective, that this board has been, um, very transparent and certainly wants to do the right thing, um, by, not only this board, but by the seniors. So, um, I, I, as we go forward, I understand, um, we're, the couple of comments that you wanted to either kill the article or bring it to the May town meeting, and, um, and I'm hearing what you're saying very closely, so, and thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
I do have, um, something that I would like to say. First of all, um, I did not, I just want to be clear, while I did say in our meeting on Thursday, talking about future Board of Selectmen's and that protection, I did not reference people in the past, so I do not want to get myself in trouble with any past selectmen. And the reason I was thinking about that was because the chairman was looking for a reason. As you know, I supported a middle-of-the-road approach to this problem, and, um, we were given two articles by the town manager to vote on. The second article did have, um, some of the things that you're talking about now in place. And it was my understanding from talking to the town manager early on about this article that the main concern was the authority placed in the chair. While I understand that the bylaw and the charter do not match, and while I understand that the, um, governance of this board and the authorities, um, are in the charter, we also could have made an amendment to the charter, just as we've done to the bylaw, and that could have been voted on as well. It's important to me personally that this group be treated a little bit differently because I do think it's different, and I did say that in our meeting, um, when we voted on the articles themselves. And the reason I feel that is because I believe that the seniors themselves have an avenue. I think that the second choice, um, for the article to say that the Board of Selectmen would appoint six, the, um, Council on Aging would appoint five. The reason I feel that way, and I want to be very clear, is not because I think that anyone in an elected position knows any better or anyone at the council knows any better, but quite honestly, I feel that it is a very transparent process, the way we do committees now. And we do have interviews and we do have all that, but me meeting someone for five minutes, ten minutes, depending on how long, sometimes a little bit longer, and having a resume, doesn't always give me the best insight into that situation. And I just feel that the members of the Council on Aging would have more insight into those people than I would. I, um, do human resources in my day job and, um, we don't always get it right. And so that is why I went for the middle-of-the-road in terms of the governance. And, um, because I think that you may have some better insight into who those five other members are, and I think that because you're a committee that's, um, people-oriented, and there's a lot of those out there, I just feel that way. But I just want to be clear that I do not believe that this is about politics. I really don't. And I try, I stressed that the other night, when, you know, sometimes we have to agree to disagree. It's not about the integrity of this board. I did bring it up to the town manager, he did go back to the chair, I, you know, I know that. I know that the chair and the vice chair had a mixed bag on it, um, and I think that you have probably found that out too, and to Mr. Panalitis's about having the time to the appointments, I agree with that. But that's why I don't want to be responsible for me personally for all of those votes. And I think that the majority of the membership should be here, and I don't, I agree that the board, the chairman of any board should not have the responsibility that was placed in the council the way that the current bylaw stands. So I do agree that the bylaw has to be changed. I would support, and I'm gonna tell my members, that we withdraw it and consider bringing it back in a different way, but I also know that my colleagues feel very strongly that it's about, um, aligning all the boards to the same. And they're entitled to that opinion, and quite honestly, I'm not saying that I'm right and they're wrong, and I just want to be clear on that. So that's all I have to say.
Mr. Strong?
I have nothing, just something to say. Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
I'm kinda compelled to at least offer some commentary, cause I think these folks came, came out tonight, um, in part at least to hear what we thought. So out of respect to them, um, I'm, I'm gonna offer a couple of comments, but I'm gonna come at this a little differently. I agree with, um, virtually everything that you stated about the process, and I think probably, um, of all my colleagues, having been the past chairperson, I may be counted among the most focused on process at the table historically, and that doesn't make me any better than anybody else, but, um, for a long time, I focused on process. And it was raised this evening that, um, there's a people component to this discussion, and I wholeheartedly agree with that. But I want to dispel, um, some of the concern, or at least attempt to do that, because it's of concern to me on a number of levels. First and foremost, um, I think it needs to be put to rest, as was stated, that there is absolutely no political motivation whatsoever to this issue. And it's disheartening to me that that even is part of the discussion, to be quite frank. I know, having been on this board for nine years, that there were years not too long ago, that we were forced to reckon with massive cuts in our town budget. And I remember sitting in the middle of the table when residents would come forward at here or at town meeting and basically say that all budgets should be cut, including, and in some cases, I recall specifically targeting the Council on Aging budget. And I can tell you as an individual and also as a representative of this board, to a person, myself included, we never let that happen because we believe in our community and we believe in the value of the senior center to our community, and more importantly, we believe and respect the contributions to our community that our seniors have made historically. I myself don't go to the senior center very often. I had an experience a couple of years ago where I was told, I'm not welcome there. So that's an unfortunate situation, but I want to assure all of you that I spend a lot of time at the Tuxbury Food Pantry, and I can tell you that the majority of people who unfortunately rely on the food pantry are seniors in our community. I interact with them there. I've had, um, my in-laws live with me for in excess of twenty-five years in our home. I see seniors throughout the community on Saturday when I go to the post office, when I get my gasoline, when I go to the grocery store, when I'm out at the restaurants. I meet and see and interact with every member in every level of our community here in town, seniors included. So to infer that we don't appreciate or understand what's going on is of concern to me, because I think for me personally, um, I don't feel that way. And I would hope that you would rethink that thought process just a little bit. What I hear is that we're not that far apart. And while Mrs. Stronach offered a compromise, um, from that vantage point, and I appreciate and respect that attempt, what it fails to do is meet what Mr. Panalitis has expressed, which is the reason to make a change at all, which is the consistency of how things are done and the, the reliability that, um, all residents in town can understand how this gets done and how people are appointed to the Council on Aging. And what I believe is that we really aren't that far apart. It's been explained that this board has instituted a policy over the last few years of interviewing candidates. That's an open process. That doesn't mean that it excludes anyone in this room from that process. And I kinda got the sense that there's, um, a presumption that that's the case. When people apply, there's an open process. The selectmen schedule an open meeting, the agenda is published, the names of those individuals are posted publicly. So in this instance, if someone were to apply for a position on the Council on Aging, everyone who pays attention to our agenda would know that that's taking place. You have a right to come, just as you did tonight, to express your opinion about any candidate. That's how we do things in the public forum. We can't make any decisions behind closed doors, that's the law. So for us to do our job, we have to conduct it in the public realm. And what I think I hear Mr. Panalitis saying, and I'll just say it for myself, what I believe is that the decision of appointing any position in town, the Council on Aging positions are no less, nor are they any more important than any other position in town that we appoint, because it takes all of those positions to make our community work. But when we come forward to make those appointments, I want to hear from what you think about those candidates. I want to know about them. And there's a process in place to allow for that. So rather than assume that it's a closed process, I would encourage you to think about it as an open process that you have input in. The rules of the road might change a little bit, and to your credit, as a group of seniors, more so many, many more who are in the, than are in the room tonight, there have been time and time again where we've asked for your support to do various things in our community, to advance the quality of life here in Tuxbury. I don't see this as any different. This isn't taking something away, in my opinion. It's changing a little bit about how business gets done, but it's consistent with what many communities do, it's consistent with how this board operates relative to all the other town, boards in town. And I don't hear hue and cry about, we were political on that appointment, or this board is now political and it wasn't before. In fact, I would submit to you that our town is running pretty damn well right now, and we're very fortunate. So I would ask for you to just consider that we're not in a situation where the train is going off the tracks. This is a situation where we can improve a little bit on what we're doing from our vantage point, and I, I see it as a step to make things tighter and more consistent. I understand and respect the perspective that many of you expressed tonight and I've heard from others, I want to stress that point as well, cause it, again, we talk to people, we know people in the community. I also want to just respond very quickly to one other comment, I think Mrs. Brabant made, made it, um, and was quoting or citing Mrs. Stronach about integrity. And I think it was stated that no one here on this side of the table, or I believe on, on that side of the room, is challenging anyone's integrity in here. But to suggest that in the future that could change, to me, it, it rings somewhat hollow because I think Mr. Panalitis said it, but I want to repeat it, is that at the end of the day, the responsibility for who sits here is, rests with all of you. If we don't appoint the right people, if we don't make the right decisions, you won't have us here. That's the ultimate power. You have the right to do that. Every April, at least two of us, most, most years and on the off year, one of us has to put our name in front of you. And ultimately, if you disagree with anything we do, you have the right to say exactly that. Go away, we'll pick someone else. And to the integrity level, it puts the burden on you to pick the right people. And unfortunately, in our society, I would submit, many people don't participate in the process, but I know that you do. So exercise the right and audit the work and make sure that we're doing the right thing. So to tie those two things together, communication, and I, I hear the message that you would have preferred more lead time, I respect that. We've been living without warrants being mailed to homes now for probably six or seven years, so this is nothing new. Communication can be improved, I hear you. But if this were to pass a town meeting and next year we need to interview people, I would like to think that the thirty or forty people that are here tonight would be here for those interviews and offer their insights. There's no reason why we have to close that door to that. I believe the town manager met with the council or the chair and vice chair of the council. I believe or, or know that the warrant for our entire community was just published about two weeks ago, roughly. So there's no disadvantage to anyone in this room tonight who's concerned about this issue in comparison to any other subject that the Board of Selectmen, or more importantly, town meeting has addressed at any time in the last six or seven years since the warrant has not been mailed. There's no change in that, there's no motivation to do anything different, this is the process that we adopted some years ago. So I'd ask you to try to at least understand that point of view, because I, I hear your concern, but I think there's been some, um, assignment of motivation that isn't necessarily accurate. The facts are the facts in the context of how the warrants developed and how the processes followed. So I ask you to think about that. And at the end of my comments, what I would say is this, um, we have a town meeting for exactly the reason that we're all in here tonight. We have respectfully, it seems to me, a slight, and I emphasize the word slight, difference of opinion. We're not talking about black and white, we're talking about gray, in my opinion. And the ultimate referee in our process in town is town meeting. The residents should decide, not necessarily five people here, or perhaps the four or five who came forward tonight to offer their opinion. At the end of the day, there are many more seniors in our community than are present tonight, and there certainly are many more other residents who aren't involved thus far, who should have their say. So I would suggest that, um, I know that you might want us to withdraw the article. Our job at this point is to make a recommendation, we don't carry the day, town meeting, which is really you and others have the final word. And I believe it's my job to assess the picture and put the issues before the residents to decide, as opposed to me making the decisions. And down the road, um, many more people than are present tonight have a different view than collectively we do. So I'm sorry to be long-winded, I'm trying I'm trying to make that people connection, because I'm concerned about some of the comments that I heard, and I'm respectful of them. But I, I'm not swayed, not because I don't hear you, I think what the board is trying to accomplish is correct from a governance perspective, and I think we need to be, a takeaway that we got, or I got, tonight, is that we have to go a little bit further with the people component to connect those dots together. But I don't believe it's an either-or. I think both goals can be accomplished if we rethink that a little bit. And I would encourage both seniors who are interested, and my colleagues, as well as myself and the town manager, to consider that input. So, thank you.
All right. Hearing no other comments or issues coming from the rest of my colleagues, we are going to, I just want to, before we get moving on to our new business, we do have about five items that we need, or six items that we have on our agenda, and then we will take up the special town warrant. For those that want to hear our discussion specifically about that warrant, we won't take that up immediately now. Like I said, we have five or six items. Once we get to the special town meeting warrant, I will move, if you are to want to stay and hear our debate, I will move that particular warrant article consideration to the top of the line, even though it's number, it's not one, and we'll move that to the top. We'll discuss that first, make whatever recommendation we will or won't on that article, and therefore, you don't have to stay here to hear all 20-something articles. So, I just want you to be aware of what the plan is. We do have some other items we have to take care of before we get to the warrant article. So, I will now move on to our next item, which is the hours for trick-or-treating. So, we have, Halloween falls on a Monday this year, and we're looking to set the hours, and traditionally, that's been six to eight. So, Mr. Gay?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that we have Halloween hours on October 31st, Monday, starting at 6:00 p.m. and ending at 8:00 p.m.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set trick-or-treating hours from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. on Monday, October 31st. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye as well? It's unanimous. The next item is a request by Strongwater Farm. They would like to conduct a Zombie 5K run on the grounds of Strongwater Farm. This would be on Saturday, October 8th, in the afternoon, 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. It looks like the entire race, although the map is difficult to read, seems to be all entirely on their grounds, and we have, I'm looking for the comments, do we have any comments from Public Safety on that?
They didn't have a chance to put it in.
Do we, Mr. Montori?
I believe they, I believe they did review it, but since it's all on their property, there was not, were no concerns.
No real concerns, because it's on the property. Okay, then, we have in front of us a request to approve that 5K run. Do I hear any motions to that effect?
I'll make a motion to approve the Strongwater Farm Zombie 5K on Saturday, October 8th, 2016, from 4:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m.
I have a motion.
I'll second.
And a second to approve the Zombie 5K run requested by Strongwater Farm. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well? It's unanimous.
Can I just make the note that that's October 8th, in case anybody does want to participate?
Yep. October 8th, 2016, and I'm sure they will be advertising shortly. The next item on our agenda, and I know we said last meeting that we wouldn't talk about appointments, but it came to, it was raised by my colleague, Mrs. Stronach, that we currently don't have members seated on the Local Housing Partnership. The representative for us is a non-voting ex officio member, but we currently don't have anybody in that position, and I believe Mrs. Stronach has expressed interest in taking that seat.
I'd be happy to take that position if you still would like.
Okay, so, unless anybody, there's any discussion on that, I'll take any motions relative to the potential appointment of Mrs. Stronach to that position.
Some votes, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we have a motion to appoint Mrs. Stronach as our representative to the Local Housing Partnership. Do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well? Okay, now, Wamisit, the Harvest Festival had to unfortunately be rescheduled, much to the chagrin of our colleague, Mr. Gay. It was moved now to October 9th, the Sunday, from 12:00 to 5:00, again at the Livingston Street Fields, and Wamisit Lanes has offered, or is requesting, a one-day beer and wine application to be served at the festival. We have, I think, all of the required documents. Is there anything, Mr. Montori, that you know that we're missing relative to the application? I see Public Safety has responded, and they have dealt with those issues that they saw. Is there, are you aware of anything else?
No, it looks like everything's in order. I would, but just in case, if something's missing or something needs to change, I would just make it subject to my final approval.
Okay. Any other discussion or questions relative to this?
I just have one question. I'm assuming that TJ wasn't able to provide, because we're not going to have two people there, is that correct?
Correct. It's Stronach and TJ Callahan's, they had a conflict with that date when we changed it.
I'm sure they're disappointed.
But I'll, there's something further I could say, but I'll wait till my board reports it.
Okay.
Thank you.
To talk about that. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Gay.
Yeah. I'll make a motion to approve the one-day liquor license for Wamisit for October 9th, from 12:00 to 5:00 p.m. at Livingston Field for the Harvest Fest, subject to the town manager's approval.
Thank you very much. So, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second to approve the one-day beer and wine license at, for the Harvest Festival at, for Wamisit Lanes. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Chair votes aye as well? Also unanimous. And again, an appointment that we said we weren't going to do anymore, but this one is obviously due to a new staff member within the district. The, believe it or not, the Tuxbury Memorial High School Building Committee is still in existence, even though that building has been functioning for at least, what, four years now, I think, five years now? So, since the committee's still in action, the former superintendent had a seat on there due to his position, and now with the new superintendent, Mr. Malone, that we need to address the fact that he's not officially appointed to that committee. So, I don't think there's a whole lot of debate here, but if there's any comments, otherwise, I'll take a motion relative to his appointment.
I'll make a motion to appoint Superintendent Malone to the Tuxbury Memorial High School Building Committee.
I'll second.
I have a motion, second, to appoint Chris Malone, super-